Thank you. Good morning everyone and welcome to the session on table topics. The other day I was watching the video on maybe for Facebook watch. Where they were talking about snipers. People who use long range weapons to take out targets. One thing that stuck me. That struck me was a statement made by the post. Who who himself had been a sniper for a very long time. He said, all your training teaches you how to pull the trigger, how to assemble a gun. How to repackage it, how to move from one place to the other. But it is only out in the field that you receive the biggest learning of them. And that learning is where to pull that trigger. Because you have to react to a lot of situations because often in the battlefield, the situation is very fluid. There are many moving targets. And you have sometimes only a few seconds of window in which you have to carry out this. Otherwise, that opportunity is lost. I was wondering table topics is a lot like that. A lot of moving targets, you've been given a topic. Suddenly you have to speak on something you may not be familiar. Now if that was not enough, maybe you are speaking for the first time or maybe you are speaking for the hundred time but you're still nervous. How do you overcome? How do you overcome about 12 right now and usually about 100 eyes looking at you? In a table topics context. What do you do when you fumble? What do you do when you are at loss of words just like I was a moment ago? These things happen in table topics. Today, I'm going to tell you a technique by which you can effectively avoid these pitfalls. Even if you don't, I want you to know one thing that there isn't a speaker in this world. Who has not fumbled at one point or the other. If you read that quote by Michael Jordan where he says that he's missed more than 300 shots. And 26 times he was asked to take the winning shot and he missed. And that is failed over and over and over again and then the last hit, that is why I succeed. I want you to feel assured today that whatever we are going to cover is not rocket science. And even if you were asked a question on rocket science and you knew nothing about rocket science. You will at least feel confident on how to approach that question. Today, if I walk out of this room with even one of you saying that okay, I am now more confident about a table topic. My job is. Because that one person can show the others the way on how to feel confident about a table topic. First, let us look at why are table topics difficult? So what are your fears when you are given a table topic? Just type it in the chat. What are your fears? Not asking you to speak out, if you may be nervous, just type it out in the chat. How to go about it, fumble, how to comprehend the thoughts? Lack of good ideas, wonderful, what to speak? Getting a topic I won't be able to address, not speaking my best, may fumble. Okay, now. Here is the thing, what is the worst that is going to happen? In a table topic. What is the worst that is going to happen? Everyone laughs, okay, everyone is anyway going to laugh, Manjari. One way or the other, they are going to laugh. Not being able to speak, being speechless. Won't be able to utter anything, I'll tell you what the problem is. The first thing that you can get in a table topic is a topic that you do not understand. And as Lakshmi said, because you do not understand it, you misinterpret it and then you decide to bake your own topic. And you go about speaking, go on speaking about it. You think you end up making a fool of yourself. You have to leave that aside, that is your worst fear. You'll get a topic you don't understand, that is my worst fear also. So I've conducted this workshop so many times. And sometimes I ask people, okay, give me a topic. And I once got a topic on G D P. Now understand, I have zero knowledge of G D P. Except for the fact that it stands for gross domestic product, that's it. I vogue a story around gross and domestic and product. That is the worst that is going to happen to you, that you don't know about the topic. But even if you know 10% about the topic, I can guarantee that you will be able to speak on the topic. Nine times out of 10, when you are having a conversation, you will be talking on something you know about. Now. Why is this necessary? Why is this, why is this skill necessary, the skill of impromptu speaking? I feel that it is easy to, it is easier to give an impromptu, to give a prepared speech than an impromptu speech. Because in a prepared speech, you know who your audience is, you know what your topic is, you've prepared for it. All you have to do is go and deliver it. The real hard work has already been done by you. You've researched your topic, you've created your stories, you've added a body, you've added an ending. Everything has been done, all you have to do is pray that you remember your speech and that you deliver it effectively on stage, that's it. You don't have to do anything else in a prepared speech. In a table topic. You have to do all of that at the drop of a hat. You have to bring summon all of your research, all of your knowledge. Then build your content. Then package your content and then present it. All in the space of the time where where the. Post has read out your talk. That means that you've got maximum five seconds in which to do all of that. Okay. I'll explain why table topics are difficult. But before I do that, I have a very simple question to all of you. I want you to stay here till the end. How many times has it happened that you were given a topic? Or somebody was given a topic? And the first thing that came to your mind was. That topic should have come to me, I would have kneed it. So Ankita's hand immediately went up, Vinita and Ankit, Bansuri. A lot of people, okay, a lot of hand raises, hold on to that part, I'll come back to the. Why are table topics different? To answer that, we have to go back to. What do you need in a championship speech? What is the most important thing in a championship? Many people say it's the story, some people say that it's the body movement, some people say that it's how you express yourself and a ton of different things. That I don't know and yet here I am, I made it to the finals of a, I made it to district finals twice. Okay, the most important thing in a. Prepared speech is the message. What is the message that you are trying to convey? More importantly, how do you want your audience to feel? Once you are done with your speech, that's your first question. Your second question is, what do you want your audience to do? Once you are done with your speech, two questions. In a prepared speech, if you are, if you can answer these two questions, how do you want your audience to feel and what do you want them to do? And then you build a speech around it, it becomes easy. Now that is what makes your table topic different. Because just as a message is important in a table topic speech, in a, in a prepared speech. In a table topic, you're already given the message. You are already given that message. Now you've got two, three two questions to answer. Number one, how do you want the audience to feel? And number two, what do you want them to do once you are done with your topic? Now. Second thing, the moment you receive a topic. I am 100% sure that there is some sort of a story. Or an experience or an example. That is forming inside your head, yes or no? 99 times of hundred, out of hundred, there will be some story, some example, some experience. That you will get reminded of. Now remember that experience as I delve into the next section. A very. Yes, at times but not always. Vinita, that is the one time when you do not know anything about the topic. But 99 times out of 100, a topic will remind you of something. Now if somebody was to, if so for example, somebody was to say, you know, magnetic poles on Pluto. There are three words in there that I do understand, magnetic and poles and Pluto, even if I break them down. So unless you are really unfortunate and you are given a topic that does not make any sense to you. Or you've never heard of it before. Maybe. A word that you've never heard before. You are more or less ready to do a table topic. And I can prove that to you. There's a very famous quote that a leader is someone who knows the way, who goes the way and who shows the way. I do not consider myself a leader. But I can definitely show you the way. So here is my challenge to you. I'm going to do two topics. You are going to choose what topic to give you. So anyone. Just type the topic out on chat. Any topic. And I'll answer the first topic that comes on chat. Timer, you will time me for one to two minutes like the two in table topics. Life is to live by Monica Chauvin. In my opinion, I firmly believe in one quote, we are all born. Some of us die at 25, others at 75. What do I mean by this and why do I believe in? Let me tell you. I have lived in a city called Chandigarh. To me, that entire city was one big living organism. Where everyone woke up at about six to seven o'clock in the morning, read the morning newspaper. Then took a bath, dressed up, went to office, reached office, got at nine o'clock. And at five o'clock, they came back home, helped their kids with the homework. And then had dinner and went to sleep. Day in, day in and day out, they did this from Monday to Friday. On Saturday, the entire city washed their clothes. And on Sunday, the entire city watched. Uh, watched television. Now, what if you were put inside one such city, would you want to live a life like that? Life would be not at all exciting. If you had to travel, if you want to plan a trip, it would be a disruption of your routine. And if you do not want to live a life like that, then I ask you to break routine because life is there to live. Chandigarh is a place that has a lot of government officials, two, two governments have their headquarters there. Which explains a lot of things of about their behaviors. You, on the other hand. Have got one more. You decide whether you die at 25. Or whether you will die at 75. Okay, that's one topic. I'm not saying go by the content, just go by the structure. Second topic, can you type out once again? And this time not Monica.
Second topic is given.
Give me another one because you'll say that I have already made some content on the given topics. I did not understand what that means, Ankita, if you want to call it out.
Sorry, that is typing error, I accept.
Okay, grass is greener on the other side. I for one do not believe that the grass is greener on the other side. Because I firmly believe that. It's not greener, it's just my eyes that are telling me that the grass is greener. And if you look at it, that tells you a whole lot about why human beings are such a sad species. Let me explain. Our happiness is defined by other person's happiness. To give you an example, when whenever I meet a bachelor, I ask them, are you married? And they say, no, I'm not. And I say, why aren't you married? Why should I be married? I say because happiness is not new between one life. Point is that. We as humans are not as troubled by our own. Misfortunes, then we are troubled by the other person's fortunes. Why is that person lucky? Why is that person rich? Why does he have more, more wealth than I have? Why does he have a more beautiful partner? Why can't I have that for myself? Why is their grass greener than mine? Well, I'll tell you one thing, it is all a perception, their grass is not green. It's just our eyes. So. Next time you look at someone and say that, why is that person doing better than I am? Tell yourself one thing. It's not that they are doing better than you, you are. You are not doing the best that you can. Now, in both the topics, how did I start? How did I start? No, vocal can come later, I want you to focus on the structure, how did I start? Anyone.
I think you addressed the topic directly in the beginning.
More importantly, I gave an. Example, no, examples came later.
I'm phrasing the topic again.
Not really. I gave an opinion.
Right.
You know, whatever happens, you'll say that I do not understand the topic. You will have an opinion, even you not understanding the topic is an opinion. And everyone has an opinion. I have a nine year old nephew. He's in the mild spectrum autism, he has an opinion. A little kid has an opinion, a newborn baby has an opinion, which they express by crying out. Everyone has an opinion, if you still don't believe me, go to Facebook, you'll find 850 million opinions and counting. Everyone in this world has an opinion now. If you are given a topic, you will definitely have an opinion about it. You will have an opinion about, I'm just going through the topics, grapes are sour. Are they sour or not? Yes or no, you will have an opinion. No, red, red, yellow, green, see, no is an opinion, red, yellow, green. You will have an opinion about it, you will have, have an opinion about red, you will have an opinion about yellow, you will have an opinion about green. They remind you of something, the combined colors remind you of something. Sushia Toastmasters, they remind us of timing lights. But if you're not a toast master, they would remind you of traffic lights. That is an opinion coming, what did I do next? I went into my reason. Because once I have an opinion, I need to substantiate it with a reason. A simple discussion such as, what, what do you want for dinner tonight? You're being asked for your opinion. Right, and you answer, I want to have pizza tonight. Now if your mother is anything like my mother. And if I tell her that I'm, why I want to have pizza tonight. It's not going to be a pleasant night. Okay, but if I say that I want to have pizza tonight because. Now I am giving a reason. Alright. I want to have pizza tonight because for the last five days, we've had chapati and dal. And frankly, I'm tired of. Reason done. Now you come with your examples or your experiences or your story, the first thing that came to your mind. Remember when you started off with a topic, the first thing that came to your mind, you bring that into it. Yesterday we had the yellow dal, day before yesterday we had, I don't even know if we can call that dal. And the day before that, well. There were more stones in it than there was dal. You've given three examples. Now, what you have to do is make an argument for pizza. So, we will always have dal, but can we have pizza tonight, please? I do not want you guys to believe. That you can coerce your mothers into making whatever you want. Through this session. But what I'm telling you is how to approach a topic. You start with an opinion. You give a reason for your opinion. Then you give examples or experiences around your opinion. Three basic things, opinion, reason, examples. Now. There's a fourth component which is summarizing or you close with your opinion. Okay. Today being the first day, the first time that you are being introduced to this technique. I just want you to focus on opinion, reason and example. Bonus points if you can summarize. So typically, your topic can start with, in my opinion, I think that. Or straight away, straight away by restating whatever was said, you stated your opinion. Dive into your reason, the reason I believe so, I say so because, or simply because. And then let me explain. Or here is an example, or here is a story that I want to share. Bonus, and with summarizing concluding in summary. Am I making sense now? Trust me, I did not know answers to questions like, tell me something about yourself. My first response usually would be, you've got five pages of my resume, why don't you learn a lot about me? Obviously, that would not be a polite answer. Or where do you see yourself five years from now? I had no idea how to answer that question. But once I found this approach, the audio approach as we call it, opinion, reason, example, opinion, I can answer any question. Even questions I do not know what they know. So the other, when I was talking about the gross domestic product. I spoke about. That to me, these are three words. And each of these three words individually mean something, something in themselves. So gross is the overall sum or the summation, it can also mean something that is very ugly. Domestic, well, anything that pertains to family or in my house or something that I can domesticate. And product, well, it could be something that I can use or it could be when two numbers are multiplied together. So I may not know anything about the gross domestic product, but I definitely know a thing about gross or domestic or product. And I wish you had asked me the question about gross or domestic or product and I would have given you an answer that would have made you much happier. That was what my table topic was. I simply broke it down. So. Here is the thing, even if you do not understand the topic. Or you're not very familiar with the topic. Talk about whatever that topic tells. And then, and then try and answer it to the best of your ability, use the audio. Opinion, reason, example, thing. And we're going to do some table topics now. I want you to keep this structure in mind, O R E. I will write it down for you. If everything else fails, you begin with, in my opinion. What, what does, and then you state your opinion. Then you say because. Or I say so because, and then for example. Finally, summarizing. These are the four points that you have to give in a one to two minutes. Now do we have a table topic master or do you want me giving you table topics?
Uh, thank you Toastmaster Rupinder, yes, we do have two table topic masters in fact. I would go ahead and introduce them. The first table topic master for today is Toastmaster Vinita. Toastmaster Vinita kindly unmute yourself.
Good morning everybody. So should we start this session?
Yes, absolutely Toastmaster Vinita, if you could just introduce the timer one so that she can give the timer cards.
Okay, so good morning everyone once again. I take the pleasure in introducing the timer for today's workshop, table topic session. None other than Toastmaster Sonia Turkey who is an avid tracker and a fitness freak. So please help me welcome the timer for today's table topic session, Toastmaster Sonia. Sonia, please, do you read out?
Just to add, after every topic, I'll be doing a very quick evaluation.
Sonia, if you could please read out like what is the time given for the.
Thank you for such a good introduction, Toastmaster Vinita.
On your marks, get set, go. Goosebumps I get when I hear this command before starting a marathon. Little panic, nervousness, yet alert mind, just to finish the race at the right time. Because every second matters when something is set against the clock. And practice puts you above all this. Good morning fellow Toastmasters, I am the timer of today's table topic marathon. I will display the screen green when a speech, speech reaches at one minute. Yellow screen at one minute thirty seconds and red screen at two minutes. Thus, green screen shall indicate the qualification of a speaker. A red screen warning beyond which a speaker will have only thirty second in hand to remain in the race. Every speaker can take thirty seconds extra to think upon the topic. I shall be presenting my report at the end of the meeting. Over to you Toastmaster Vinita.
Thanks a lot Toastmaster Sonia. Now friends, after having such an interesting learning session by the maestro Toastmaster Rupinder himself. Let us now move towards the practicals and without wasting any of our time. Let us move to the exact table topic session. I would like to have some volunteer for the table topic session, can someone volunteer? Let us keep quick, so yeah, Abhishek has raised his hand, Basri has raised her hand. So I'll take these two people first. So Abhishek, your topic is on the way. Your topic is, when has honesty not been? Your topic is, when has honesty not been the best policy for you? I repeat it, when has honesty not been the best policy for you? Over to you, Abhishek.
Thank you Toastmaster Vinita. I can recall when I was, uh, four years old. And I heard this somewhere in the school or home, honesty is the best policy. And since then, yes, I have believed it very firmly that yes, honesty, honesty is the best policy. And I've been following it in my business, at home, with my girlfriends, with my. Wife too. Now friends, here's the catch. That where honesty cannot be the best policy. And every time. I can tell you whenever I've been honest with my wife, like if I say every time, I have. I, I've been reminded of this particular line by the table topic master, that honesty is not the best policy. Because I remember when I tell my wife, hey, you did not do this the right way. And she is like, oh yes, I don't know to do anything, you are the best, I don't know anything. And there, this quote, honesty is the best policy, went for a toss. So I feel at places diplomacy can be better than honesty. So. I, I am sure all of you in your life must have felt this, that no, at this place, I shouldn't have been honest enough. And for me, every other place, I am following this, but I'm trying to be more diplomatic with my wife. Because in this case, honesty is not always the best policy. Thank you.
Over to you Toastmaster Rupinder. Will you be doing the evaluation, uh, after every topic?
No, I'm just gonna do it, just time it for one minute. Abhishek, I love that opening, I can recall that honesty is the best policy. And then you went into the reason I can tell you about the. Places where honesty is not the best policy and you followed it up with a humorous anecdote or an example about, uh. The, about the fact that being honest with the wife is not the best policy. And then you tried to submit a, now where do you think, where I think you can improve? You spoke about wife and girlfriends. And the audience was led to believe that, okay, there is something that is going to happen along those tracks. And then when your wife came in your example. We thought that your girlfriend should figure in the examples, uh, somewhere. That did not happen and as a listener, I was kind of. Uh, dissatisfied, but otherwise wonderful first attempt. And you followed the Oreo approach, you tried to summarize, that summary could have been more crisp and final recommendation. You took a long time to get to your reason. Usually your opening statement is about one to two sentences long. I believe in it or I don't believe in it. This is the reason I do not believe in it and here is an example. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next one.
Thank you Toastmaster Rupinder. Uh, next topic goes to, uh, Toastmaster Basuri. Your topic is one incident. One incident when your actions spoke louder than your words. I repeated, Basuri. One incident. When your actions spoke louder than your words. Over to you.
Good morning, everyone. I am a firm believer that your actions should always speak louder than your words. Your words, otherwise it will always be, you will be just beating around the bush, you'll be just making noises. But ultimately you will not be there. I have always wanted to take up leadership positions. I have inculcated this thing inside me from my father. He has always been a leader, he has always been someone who is very passionate about things he does. So I have got that, got that thing from him. In my school, since class four, when I used to see my seniors on stage. I always used to think there will be one day when I will also be there standing on the stage as a captain. Every passing year, I'm in our school, it used to start from class nine that you would get position. So when I was, when I was in ninth, I always used to work hard for my house or for my class. It, in all my parents' teachers meeting, my teachers used to say that Basuri is my right hand, she works so much. Everything she does for the class and my mother would use to complain to me. You work so much in school, you never do something in the house, I think your teacher is lying. But then I knew the efforts I put in for my school. In class nine, I did not get a position. In tenth, I did not get a position. In eleventh as well, I did not get a position. I always, I, I started believing that it is not my thing and I'm always going to fail, I'm never ever. Going to get a position. But then, in my class twelve, which was the last year. I was finally made the captain of my house. Otherwise, I would have gotten the position of vice captain or maybe prefect. But in twelve, because of the work I had done, because of my actions in my entire school life. I finally got to become the captain of my house. That was when my actions spoke louder than my words. And I was given and, and I could feel the happiness because of my actions. Thank you.
Toastmaster Basuri, over to you Toastmaster Rupinder for the evaluation.
Bansuri. Overall excellent, beautiful example. Reason was missing but the example substantiated the reason, so going to ignore that. So no, straight away from opinion to example, perfectly acceptable. Where I see a challenge is you started with good morning everyone. And not a big challenge, but if you are, let's say in a table topics contest and if I'm the judge, the moment you say good morning. I will start thinking, okay, she does not know too much about the topic, she's right now trying to figure out the topic. That is the first thing that is going to come to my mind. Okay, then you stated your belief or you stated your opinion that you've always believed in the statement. And the other thing that I want you to focus on is your rate of speech. Either you are nervous or you have a natural tendency to speak very fast. So there are some that might not be able to follow you. So you might want to pace yourself. And what I would suggest is that after every sentence, give yourself a pause for about a second. One very easy way to do that is just say one Mississippi. Inside your mouth, not alone. It can't be, I firmly believe that actions speak louder than word, one Mississippi. It's, I firmly believe that actions speak louder than word. But that will give you that one second pause, it will also give you a breather, what it will also do is it will give you many more ideas that you can build upon. But overall lovely story, totally believed in it, like totally related to it. I loved how you spoke about how results were not coming and then finally closed it. My last recommendation, your closing was a little bit dry. You had made your point when you said that actions. My actions had spoken louder than words. You've made your impact. Do not drag it by another sentence. Right? You leave the audience on a high. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you Toastmaster Rupinder. Uh, Ankita, are we good to go or we are, uh, we have to bring in?
No, you, you can take one, you can take one more topic.
Okay, okay, okay. So who is the next volunteer?
Hi, volunteer.
Uh, help me find out who is he.
Siddharth, Siddharth, Toastmaster Siddharth.
Okay, sorry. Uh, Toastmaster Siddharth, your topic is. Why does an empty vessel make more noise? I repeat, why does an empty vessel make more noise? Over to you, Toastmaster Siddharth.
Some of the life's questions are very difficult to answer. Ever since I was a child, I've always wondered why empty vessels make more noise. Why they look like our politicians? They make empty vessels make a lot of promises about what is inside, but once you turn them around, you find absolutely nothing or maybe a pebble or. The reason is probably related to physics, but I'm not going to talk about physics. I'm going to talk about how being an empty vessel and making a lot of noise is going to benefit all of us. For example, when I was the president of Toastmasters Club of Bahati, I was pleased to have a brilliant E C team. They did all their work, but who got the golden gavel? Me. So it's always good to be an empty vessel and make a lot of noise and get the golden gavel. There are other reasons why empty vessels make a lot of noise. When you're an empty vessel. You basically don't have anything inside. So then what do you show to people? The noise is the show. It is the drama around which your life revolves when you're an empty vessel. So you must understand that you must first realize whether you're an empty vessel or a vessel which is full of stuff. And then depending upon the situation, you must choose your course of action. Noise, lot of noise, even more noise or no noise. Now, once you have chosen between these multiple choice options that I've given you, and if you're confused, you can always contact me. You need to choose the right amount of, the right vocabulary, the right amount of noise and make the right amount of. A drama around it and once you have done all of those things, I assure you, nobody will believe you are an empty vessel, even if you are one. So this is how I have solved some of my life mysteries. What do you think about it? Over to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you Toastmaster Siddharth. Over to you, Toastmaster Rupinder.
Siddharth, you are an experienced Toastmaster, so permit me to be a little direct when I give your evaluation. You had a lovely opening when you said that every, ever since I was a child, I wondered. Why empty vessels make no noise and you gave your reasons. And then you gave a plethora of examples. Wonderful. Thus far. Where I. Felt was the challenge was that you were full of ideas. And you did not know which idea to project when. Or I would not say you did not know, you tried to project multiple ideas. For example, there was a physics. Then there was politicians. Then there was your own experience as a club president. Right? Somewhere I felt that. The message got muddled, whether we should be an empty vessel, whether we should not be an empty vessel, for example. What I would have done, because you actually picked on a wonderful, uh, wonderful cannon when you said that, when you spoke about politicians. How they make empty promises and they sound like, uh, uh, empty vessels and. Then the, that wonderful, uh, sentence that you gave, the noise is the show. So if this had centered around the politicians. Not one politician, not one political party, not one country, because this is a general pattern. About promises that are not kept. And there's a lot of noise that are made, uh, made, uh, made about the one promise that they keep or they portray to keep. It would have made for a wonderful topic, but overall good treatment. In a one to two minute speech, you've got one message, focus on that one message. I, in fact, even in a five to seven minutes, we took one message. Focus on that one message, do not mix your message, messages. Otherwise, they will come across as muddy. But thank you for sharing your topic.
Thanks a lot, Toastmaster Rupinder. Uh, with this, I'll hand over, uh, the session to my co-table topic master. Toastmaster Sashwati. Henceforth, she'll be taking up the table topic, uh, topics. Uh, over to you, Toastmaster Sashwati.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Vinita. Good morning, everyone. With, uh, Rupinder saying D T M's wonderful ideas of. Attempting table topics, that is opinion, reason for your opinion, examples and conclusions. Let's start. The next table topic session. Can we have some volunteers, please?
Ankita has been.
Ankita and Fernaz.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start with Ankita. Your topic is. Dreams, the sunny side of our life. I'll repeat it again, dreams, the sunny side of our life. Toastmaster Ankita.
Dreams are the sunny side of our lives. Absolutely true and I strongly agree. But do you know why? It is because we live two lives. One, that is our reality, that we have to even pay for. And the second. Are our dreams, which are free. The reality that you have to play for is often what you cannot, sometimes you don't have control over. But your dream is yours. I don't have to pay for it, I don't have to be answerable for it. And I can go into that bubble and enjoy my life and come back to reality whenever needed. So definitely dreams are the sunny side of life, but what kind of dreams are we talking about here? I think if it is related to aspirations as to what I want to be, how I want to be, the person that I want to be. Well, then you have to have very calculated dreams. But the kind of dream I want to address right now is procrastinating. I want to live in my reality with my husband, two children, my mother-in-law and all the baggage that comes with that. And then in the evening when my son is asleep, put my legs up and go into my dream bubble. In that dream, I'm reading a book, sipping coffee made by, made by a maid and enjoying life. So that is my sunny side of, of the reality of my life. So till it doesn't harm anybody. Till it doesn't harm me, I would love to live in that bubble sometimes. Hence, I definitely agree that dreams are the sunny side of life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ankita. Uh, over to you.
Ankita, you nailed it on stating your opinion, the way you stated it. Uh, giving your reason and then also your summarizing. I felt that it took a long time to get to your examples, as I said to Bansuri earlier. She had made her point, with your reason, you had made your point, when you said that dreams are free. Absolutely loved it and real life we pay for. Straight away get into it, so. So, for example, you could have said, in my dream, I want to be reading a book. And leisurely going along with my life and getting a cup of tea made for myself. Take them into your dreamland and then bring them back. In reality. I have to wake up at six o'clock in the morning, dress kits for school and blah, 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 blah. And that would have been a perfect exam. Okay. And then your closing was perfect. So all was, all that was needed was just delving into that example. Bringing out, uh, bringing out dream versus reality. Or you could have used examples, for example, in my dream. I want to be a pilot. Reality, I'm driving a wagon. In my dream, I want to have butter chicken. Reality, I'm having, I'm having bread and butter. In my dream. I want to be driving a Ferrari. In reality, I've told you what I'm driving. So three examples there would have enhanced it. Okay, so just get to your examples first, otherwise perfect topic. Let's move on.
Thank you so much. Now we have, uh, Toastmaster Fernaz. Toastmaster Fernaz, your topic is. To travel is to live. To travel is to live.
Yeah, I'll take my thirty seconds.
Sure.
Um, in my opinion, living is not something that is doing your daily stuff and, uh. At the end of the day, you go to your bed and, uh, again begin with, uh, begin the same si- uh, circle and. Go by it, uh, day by day. Li- uh, living is something, uh, when, uh. You can, uh, do something spontaneous, something unexpected, uh, uh, at a period of time, uh, again and again. So that you, you have that spice of life. And one of the major spices of life for me is traveling. Something that always keeps me motivated. If I think sometimes that. Um, uh, I'm very depressed that, oh my god, my future will be like this, my future will be like that, I can't achieve that. Then I always have a backup plan that whatever happens, I will go to like Ireland, I will go to Dublin and stay there. And stay in a little cottage and, uh, travel the world like that. I will go to, uh, see the northern lights. I'll, um, we'll go to the Hawaii islands and whatever I will do. And that would be, uh, my, uh, backup plan and that would be. And that would be my backup plan and that would be as significant as what is, what is my aim in life right now. So, I think that always motivates, motivates me traveling and so it is one of the most significant spices of my life. Thank you.
Thank you so much Fernaz. Over to you, Rupinda.
Fernaz, even I am intrigued by Ireland today you described it. I want to go to Ireland now. Earlier, it was Italy that I wanted to go to, but now suddenly Ireland seems very inviting and that is the impact of your speech. So congratulations. You had an excellent opening where you spoke about routine and then how spontaneity is the spice of life. And you gave a good reason also. A few points of improvement. Before that, one very thing that you have good, going well for you is your energy. Okay, it is a nervous energy, but it is the same thing that endears us to you as a speaker. What you want to do is to be looking into the camera when you are speaking. Because that displays conviction. Your energy is doing more than what it is required, but if you couple that with eye contact when you're looking right into the camera and saying that. And then you're competing that with a smile, it is going to be a killer combination. So, a lot of you, you might get feedback that you are nervous. I think you are nervous in a very positive way. That is getting translated into energy and that is permeating across to the audience. So keep that in mind, just maintain eye contact, smile and you'll be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much Rupinda. Can we have some guest volunteer for the table topics? Okay, can we have Rashmi?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, Rashmi, your topic is which fictional character you love the most and why? Which fictional character you love the most and why? It can be from a movie, book, anything.
Good morning fellow Toastmasters and table topic master. All birds find shelter in the rain, but an eagle avoids the rain by flying above the clouds. So, problems are common, but I think attitude is all that makes the difference. And today, I'm here amidst you, thinking that I would be trying to become a better table topic speaker. But thankfully to you, I have a topic and I would like to sort it out. Fiction is something which gives you a visualization and you can go to places and create a story that is unbelievable yet magical. And in my life, I have watched many movies or read many stories which have brought out the best fictions. Something which I may not have probably believed, but the writer himself has presented so well. That we are made to believe, yes, that is the most magical character. One such character, if I may say, is the fiction of, I don't remember, Rithik Roshan had once played Mahuna. And in that he had probably shown the the aliens, the alien side of the story where the aliens come on the earth and they try to have relationship with the human. And that was quite interesting. In the end, the humans are trying to protect the alien and how the villains, as usual in all the stories, try to tries to catch the alien and not send them back. So it was an interesting story which brought about how humans are more practical and at the same time, they are they are into relationships which, which are so serene and so beautiful and make us believe that yes, we can have relationships as beautiful as and with anyone else in the world. So I think yes, that is one story which took quite a toll on my side. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you so much Rashmi. Over to you, Toastmaster Rupinda.
Rashmi, to be honest, I felt that you were caught unaware by the topic. This is one of those topics where you did not did not comprehend it, comprehend it. But you did give the example of Rithik Roshan and aliens although the movie was wrong. So you did, did you, it is where I ask you a question. Did you get an example or an experience in your head?
I don't, sorry sir, actually I didn't get an example. So I was just trying to beat around the bush.
Yeah, so I got that because you, that, that was clearly visible with, it was almost after the green card that you started getting into the topic. What happens, what you would do in situation like this, if I was in your place, I would have done exactly what you did. I would have beaten around the bush until some sense came and then I would try and make sense out of topic. And that is where I need to commend you, because once it came to you, you did an honest effort to make it as close to the topic as you could. And then you followed the, the approach. So I must commend you on that. I must commend you on your courage that you still decided to stick it out. A lot of people I know would have given up inside thirty seconds, but you went to the red card and that in itself is a mission. So keep on practicing and trust me, there will come a day when you would be giving answers on the proper.
Thank you so much.
Next.
And now here we have Toastmaster Monica. Toastmaster Monica, your topic is perfection is a myth. Perfection is a myth.
I do strongly believe in that perfection is required in each and every task I do. Perfectionism is a myth. I disagree with it. Of course, perfectionism is one of the unhelpful habit. When we want that each and every task should be done in the perfect manner as desired by the concerned person. It creates lots of troubles for others. For example, when I give assignments to my children, my students, and they don't do it appropriately, I get annoyed with them. Why they are not doing it out? I ask them to redo it out and they do it and they come back. I make them understand that these things are very essential in your life. As you grow in life, move to college life. You will, you would be appreciated on these skills. But sometimes I hear the backbiting of children too. Ma'am is very strict, ma'am is very rude. But still, I strongly believe that perfectionism is required in each and every task I do. Because it brings wonders to your life, because it makes you understand to do thing in a systematic and organized manner. Of course, it hampers at times doing certain activities, like when I want to arrange certain things. So I take some time, I'll do it little later, maybe procrastination is also involved in it. But I still strongly believe perfectionism is required for each and every act or every activity we do. Although it might create some kind of irritation on the part of others, but I would love to do each and every task in a perfectionism manner. So dear friends, prefer to choose perfectionism in your task with little with little maybe violation, but be perfect in your task. Thank you. Over to you table topic master.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Monica. Over to you Toastmaster Rupinda.
Monica, negation is not easy. When you're given a topic and you contradict that topic, it is not easy. So I must say that that was probably one of the best negations that I have ever seen. And you created a very relatable example, not just for people who are students, but also for people who are teachers. As teachers, as trainers, we try, we strive for perfection, we try to encourage perfection as much as possible. You brought out the dichotomy very well, that there is perfectionism on one side, there is practicality on the other. Where I would have wanted you to improve is to nail the topic. You give all the content around why perfectionism is important. But one statement that perfection is a process. It's not about the doing things perfectly, it is about getting into the habit of doing things properly. That is what was coming out of your topic, that was something that was not stated, just that one statement. That perfection is a process or perfection is a habit would have needed this topic. Other than that, towards the closing, I think you said a couple of sentences extra, you had made your point. And nine times out of ten, we know that we've made a point and we should stop. And then that thought comes in the back of our head, oh, I forgot to mention that, and maybe I should mention that. Resist that temptation when that comes, because you've made your point. That thing that you missed out is for another speech on another day. Remember that you will give more speeches. Okay? Thank you.
Can we take up one last one? Okay, it's Toastmaster Richika. Richika, I'll just state one statement, okay? You just have to complete the statement and you need to tell us why you have completed it in that way. The statement is, I am stronger because I have been weak. I am fearless now because I'll repeat it once again. I am stronger because I have been weak. I am fearless now because. Toastmaster Richika.
I am stronger because I have been weak. I am fearless now because I have faced failures. Lucky is a person who has failed and who has realized what it means to fail, to go down and to, and to rise again. I was the person who used to cry at the smallest instant. Anything not turning out to be my way and I would be there shedding tears. By and by, I realized what it means that these are very small incidents, which do not have impact on the bigger picture of your life. And every setback is just a learning experience to make you wiser, to make you stronger, to make you believe more in yourself, to recognize your own strengths. And I have now realized that I'm so much more stronger, I'm so much more than what the smaller incidents in my life would mean. I have failed many times. I have raised after that. Perseverance is what matters. Because in the confrontation between the stream and the rock, it is the stream which wins. Not because of strength, but because of perseverance. It keeps trying, it breaks the stone and makes its way. So that is what I am. I am stronger because I have been weak. I am fearless because I have faced failures and have listened about them. Thank you.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Richika. Over to you, Toastmaster Rupinda.
Richika, I'm literally looking for opportunities. First of all, it was not an easy topic because you were already given an opening. I'm stronger because I'm weak, I'm fearless now because that opinion was already given. You had to go into the reason, one would think that that is easy, but how about you do not agree with the topic? There is always that chance. Fortunately, this time it was in your favor and then wonderful opening, I'm fearless now because of failures. And then wonderful example of lucky is the person who's faced failure and then giving your own, giving your own examples. Closing with your opinion, what I love the most was that you actually remembered the whole statement. I would have forgotten it by the end of the topic. So, great job overall. Somewhere I felt that somewhere between the green and the yellow card, I felt that you were thinking, can I add another example? So that was coming out and that was very visible. Again, I will say resist that temptation because that can be another speech for another day. What you, because the thing in table topics is coherence of thoughts. Anything that you add extra at the last second, remember you're already doing things on an impromptu basis. Now you're going to add something at the last second, it is only going to muddle later. Thankfully, you did not fall into that trap. Keep on smiling because that is a very powerful asset that you have. Other than that, wonderful topic. Thank you very much. I have to leave, but before I go, I want to draw your attention to the question I asked earlier. How many times has it happened that you, that somebody got a topic that you wanted for yourself? A lot of you raised your hands. Did it happen today? Did it happen today? Ankitan, what topic did you want?
Toastmaster Richika.
Okay, and Shippa, what topic did you want? You have to unmute yourself for that to work. Still can't hear you.
Travel is to live.
Good travel is to live. Okay. I'm going to ask you a very simple question. I want to ask you a very simple question. Today you had the opportunity, you wished for an opportunity to speak for one to two minutes on a given topic. What stops you from speaking five to seven minutes? I get a lot of my topics, a lot of my ideas for speeches from table topics. Many times we, it's not an alien feeling, every time somebody gets a topic, I go, man, I could have nailed that. And then I ask myself, if I can nail it for one to two minutes, what stops you from doing it for five to seven minutes? So next time, I hope this club at least will not tell me that they run out of speech topics. Because I think you get at least three to five of them. And if you come to Turning Point Toastmasters or Spirit Toastmasters today afternoon. You will get about nine to ten of those topics. We have about ten table topics. So hopefully, I answered one question that you have about a prepared speech. What do I speak on? There is your answer. It was an honor hosting the session with you and I would now hand it back to the meeting host. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I intervene for a picture? Could I intervene for a picture for Toastmaster Rupinda leaves? Please switch on the cameras wherever it is possible. At the count of three, one, two, three. Okay, we have a picture. Toastmaster Ankitan, do you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Rupinda sir for attending this screening session on a Sunday morning at seven thirty AM. I know you were kind of shocked when I said the meeting is on seven thirty AM. So I am very thankful of you that you finally came and gave us this session. I'm sure the members must have had an awesome time and learned a lot about how to approach a table topic. Thank you. Thank you again for that. With early morning meetings, they were shocking. In fact, I'm very happy when early morning meetings happen. I attended a meeting at six thirty AM in Minnesota and that was one of the best meetings that I've ever attended. It set me up for the rest of the week. Nothing like an energetic morning to start your day. So thank you very much. I will take your leave. If you want further information, Ankitan has my coordinates and I think Ankitan has my coordinates. And I would like to believe that Venita also has my contact details. So please take care of yourself. Have a lovely Sunday and hopefully we'll meet each other soon. Bye bye.
Thank you so much. Bye bye sir. Thank you. Thank you. We have the results. Tilutama?
Yeah, we have got seven responses, eight till now. Okay.
Yeah, we have got seven responses, eight till now. Okay.
Okay, so I have one question to all the members present here. What else do we need to do to get members attending the meeting? We are trying everything that we could, but still we are getting what fifteen, sixteen members attending a meeting which is, uh, thought in kind. Especially when we have a guest, uh, coming over. What else, what else we can do?
This time, Ankitah, I was expecting all the new members to join because whoever has, uh, I mean, are new to the club. They, uh, they would have gained a lot, uh, attending this session. But I hope a lot of new members has not joined.
It's not about new members or old members. Uh, then we have, uh, you know, guest speaker, especially at DTA, but twice DTM. People should join.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
It's not about the new member or old members.
I agree, no.
It just looks very bad when you have only seventeen, eighteen members, uh, attending a meeting when we have sixteen members. I, I don't know what else we can do.
I, I think we can just unmute ourselves till we, uh, till we have the results. Just an open discussion. Anybody wants to give an opinion.
Uh, can I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah Siddharth, please.
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't know, I've not been following our WhatsApp group very closely. And I woke up late, which is why I joined the meeting late. Uh, I normally wake up quite early, but, uh, but then me and Richika eventually joined. Having said that, uh, did we publicize it enough? Are all the new members aware how good, uh, DTM Rupenda is and what they have missed? For example, uh, for new Toastmasters who have attended, say Bansuri and others, you must have realized how good Rupenda is, right? And this is not the first session you called him for. So my question is that, uh, can we publicize it more? And attendance, uh, is this a trend or is it, this me, is this meeting an exception, is something we need to look into? And, uh, uh, this attendance low can also then reflect in the renewals that's coming up in September. So is there some other issue, underlying issue in terms of, uh, you know, members not getting, men, members not getting motivated? Then, and then what are the mentors doing to, uh, motivate the members? Are the mentors themselves here? So all of these questions we need to look at in my opinion and try and figure out the answers. Maybe the answer is there or maybe it's elsewhere, I'm not sure. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, Siddharth, I would like to watch that. As far as the publicity goes, uh, every day for last four or five days, we were continuously posting message on the WhatsApp group. That DTM Rupenda is coming, please attend, please attend. I don't know. And still if members don't show up, uh, I'm not very sure.
Here, I would just like to add up Siddharth and Ankitah, that, uh, this club Toastmaster is a self-help club. Here, nobody is going to raise you from the.